Greetings and welcome to session seven of our Bible study on Ephesians. We begin today with Ephesians, chapter five. But before, let's begin with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us together through these virtual means to study your word, to look at the text set before us, and to learn to be imitators of you as your children, and to walk in love as Christ has loved us. In your son's name we pray, amen. Well, before we get going with the questions, let's go ahead and read the text for today. I'm gonna go ahead and go back to verses one and two, even though we covered that in last session, just so we can say we started at 5:1, and we'll go through verse 14. Chapter five, verse 1. Therefore be imitators of God as beloved children, and walk in love as Christ loved us, and gave himself up for us, a fragrant offering and sacrifice to God. But sexual immorality and all impurity or covetousness must not even be named among you; but sexual immorality and all impurity or covetousness must not even be named among you, as is proper among saints. Let there be no filthiness, nor foolish talk, nor crude joking, which are out of place; but instead let there be thanksgiving. For you may be sure of this, that everyone who is sexually immoral or impure, or who it is covetous that is an idolater, has no inheritance in the kingdom of Christ and God. Let no one deceive you with empty words; for because of these things the wrath of God comes upon the sons of disobedience. Therefore do not become partners with them; for at one time you were darkness, but now you are light in the Lord. Walk, asked children of light; for the fruit of light is found in all that is good and right and true, and try to discern what is pleasing to the Lord. Take no part in the unfruitful works of darkness, but instead expose them; for it is shameful even to speak of the things that they do in secret. But when anything is exposed by the light, it becomes visible; for anything that becomes visible is light. Therefore it says, "Awake, O sleeper, and arise from the dead, and Christ will shine on you." Look carefully then how you walk, not as unwise but as wise, making the best use of time because the days are evil. Therefore do not be foolish, but understand what the will of the Lord is; and do not get drunk with wine, for that is debauchery; but be filled with the Holy Spirit, addressing one another in psalms and hymns and spiritual songs, singing and making melody to the Lord with your heart, giving thanks always and for everything to God the Father in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, submitting to one another out of reverence for Christ. So that was chapters five, 1 through 21. So I went past, I said 14 in the beginning, I meant 21. I just didn't put the last bullet point on my sheet. So, there's lots of things going on in this text. We're at, take some time, look over some of these ideas, and work through it. The first question on the page says, verse three begins with three sins. What are they, and what damage do they cause? Okay? So verse three says, "But sexual immorality and all impurity or covetousness must not even be named among you, as is proper among the saints." So, we have, let's call this sins of Ephesians 5. We have sexual immorality. We have impurity, I wanna make sure I get them right, impurity and covetousness. I don't think I spelled covetousness right. Covet-ous-ness, no need for the extra E. Covetousness, impurity, sexual immorality. You know, this is one of the great secrets of terrible handwriting. Sometimes people can't tell if you've misspelled a word. It's so sloppy and terrible, no one knows you didn't put it that, whether it was an E or an I. It's just a scribble. Is it an O? Is it an A? I don't know, it's a scribble. Bad handwriting. So, here are the first three sins. And the question is, what does that mean? What does each one mean? So, sexual immorality would be immoral behavior in regards to sexual relationships. That's just what the words are. So, this implies several things. It implies, A, there is ethical, or moral, or proper sexual behavior. There is a right place and time, a proper place and time, for sexual behavior. And there are things that are not. So that means not all sexual behavior is good. By just having the category, sexual immorality, you have to at least accept these two parts, that there is ethical sexual behavior, and there is not. Not all sexual behavior is good. Our culture does not typically want to grant item B. They will say there's proper sexual behavior, but they have a hard time filling out what B could mean. Now, there's some ways in which we tackle this subject, and the way in which the culture addresses such things. There are some obvious immoral sexual behaviors, okay? So I say the culture has a hard time defining it. There are some that everybody agrees upon, for the most part. We mostly agree that sex with children is bad. Everybody sort of agrees there. No one should be raping babies, or children. Now, what age do you stop being a child is another problem, and it's usually addressed culturally, and is a... You have to deal with questions like, do children include 17-year-olds? You have to figure it out. Well, if you pick 17, why not 16? What about 15? Well, we've stuck with 18 for a while. But then, is an 18-year-old high school senior having sex with a 17-year-old high school senior? Should that be illegal or condemned sort of thing? Well, yes it should, however, in this conversation they have a hard time filling out that line. So, sex with children is typically bad. Again, depending on how you define children. Non-consensual sex, rape is bad. That seems to be something everybody agrees upon at the moment. That if it's not consensual, then it's not good. And that's about it. Yeah, I think our culture kind of just has those three rules. Don't have sex with kids, get someone's consent, and don't have sex with your family. All right. Scripture is a bit more robust in its categories. Scripture, and I'd say this in general, but there are specific passages, tries to fill out this category first, and everything not in A is B. Okay? The culture has a tendency to fill in B, what behavior is bad, and then everything else sort of goes. So if you're not having bad sex, then everything is fine. If it's not with children, if it's not with a family member, and with it's not... And as long as it's consensual, everything's fine. That's sort of the general ground rules. Christians and Scripture have a tendency to fill in A, and then everything outside of it is then bad. So what is A? For the Christian, ethico-moral, proper sexual behavior consists in... Consensual activity between married partners of the opposite sex. That's the definition in... Yeah, that's the definition of sexually moral behavior. Consensual activity between married partners of the opposite sex. That's what it is. Everything outside of this is sexual immorality. Does consensual activity between non-married partners, is that good? No. Of the same sex, is that good? No. Non-consensual sex, no. Married partners of the opposite sex, consensual activity. That's sexual morality, that's it! That's what's moral sexual behavior. According to Scripture, according to God, according to the Church, that's moral, ethical, proper, God-pleasing. That's not that hard to understand. Because what happens when this isn't happening? Relationships are destroyed. People are destroyed. The family as a unit doesn't function properly. So, this is moral, ethical, good behavior. And everything outside of this is bad. Now, there's other topics that obviously people, if there were people in the room right now, there would probably be a couple hands raised. So let's guess at some of your questions. Should we as the Church lobby the US Congress to overturn gay marriage? I don't know, probably not. Why probably not? Well, you should recognize that there is a difference between what is legal and moral. It is moral to respect your parents. But no 14-year-old girl should go to jail because she sass-ed her mother. What is moral is not always legal. The two are not equal. And rarely are they the same. Just because something is permissible does not mean it's right. And we know that. We know that. We know we don't want the laws to require moral perfection because we ourselves can't have moral perfection. We know that we are broken. And because we are broken, we'll never be perfectly moral. And if we're never gonna be perfectly moral, then we shouldn't expect our laws to require such things. Now, this is the sort of phrase, you can't legislate morality, right? So, to a degree, you can't. Not the full morality, not with competing ethical systems, not with a nation that is not a theocracy. And even with a theocracy, you really shouldn't, wouldn't be very effective. So, if what is moral shouldn't be made legal, and things that are legal are not always moral, what do we do with immoral activities sanctioned by the state? So if the state says something is okay, and the Church says, "No, it's not," what are we to do? Well, isn't that the million-dollar question? It's the million-dollar question because people disagree on what to do next, and for what to do next. So, let's take, as the topics in our back of our minds, let's take gay marriage, for example. A gay marriage falls under the category of sexual immorality. It does not fit within this scriptural parameter for sexual behavior. It fits consensual, and it can fit married, but isn't conform to opposite partners. God made them male and female to be joined together as one flesh. That's how He made us. Now, the world doesn't recognize God as Creator. The world doesn't recognize that God made people male and female for the purpose of children. God doesn't, or the world doesn't recognize God at all. So, we shouldn't expect them to define things in the way we define them. Now, I had mentioned, I don't know if this was in Bible study, if this was in a sermon, because all the days blur together, but I've said it before. We're not, you shouldn't be surprised when the world acts like the world, right? So if the world doesn't believe in God, they're not going to set up their rules according to God's Word. So when the United States permits and legalizes gay marriage, we shouldn't be shocked, we shouldn't be surprised. Unless, of course, you're operating under the notion that the United States is a Christian theocracy that allows the Ten Commandments in Scripture to be the governing, the bedrock of our foundation. It's not, never was. We just have a lot of Christians in our country. Our general culture sort of moved that way for a long time. But our culture has always had things going on that weren't Christian. Starts with slavery, starts with civil rights issues, starts with all sorts of stuff. So this is just one more thing that shows that we, you know, we don't operate with Scripture as our fundamental premise. At least the law doesn't. The Church does, not the law. This is a right and left-hand realm thing that we've talked about in Tuesday night Bible class. So, what does the Church do? Well, again, as I just mentioned a second ago, that Tuesday adult, or that Tuesday Bible class where we talked about left and right-hand realm, and the role of the Church with the state, sort of answers and wrestles with some of these questions. And the general concept, or the general rule of thumb for us as Lutheran Christians is to focus on making moral people, not changing laws. So if we, as the Church and as Christians, want to have an impact on the world as it is now, what we are to do is to train up those in our community to be moral, to encourage those around us to be moral, and to show them the truth of good moral actions. So if we're going to be the Church on this topic of gay marriage, what are we supposed to do? We're supposed to raise our children to understand what proper ethical, moral, sexual behavior looks like. It looks like this, and only this, which excludes porn, it excludes adultery, it excludes sleeping around, it excludes premarital sex, it excludes gay sex, and homosexual behavior. It excludes much of the LGBT agenda. It excludes all of that. And if they're trained to know that, and to know the moral behavior, then at times they'll act like moral beings. And when they don't, they'll repent and try again. This is why, by the way, we're never gonna get to 5:22 if we were in a real class. If this was a class full of people, Ephesians would take 20 weeks. But we're on session seven, and we haven't slowed down yet. However, we haven't got past the first verse of, or the first question. But, "I humor you who are watching." You want to have me discuss this, I know it. You didn't want me to just glaze past this idea of sexual immorality and impurity, and just be like, "Oh, don't be bad, then let's keep moving." I know. So, that's like the first phrase of the first verse of this section. All important points. Let's move forward, though. By the way, same thing can be applied to abortion, which we are starting to see. The Church, for the last 40, 50 years, has been, had, previously, previously before Roe v. Wade, the Church didn't talk about abortion much. It wasn't legal. Everybody knew, "Don't kill babies, whether they're out of the womb or in the womb." And then they made it legal, and then the Church had to get on it. It had to reflect the issue at hand. And for the past 50 years now, the Church has been talking about abortion, has been talking about sexual morality, and what's legal versus what's moral. And so for those Churches who have been addressing abortion for a long time, they should have been prepared for the world to do the next step, which was gay marriage. But they weren't, they were shocked, I know. We're easily fooled. But abortion is starting to take a turn towards the young people being more pro-life. The Church has been doing its job. It's raising up a more pro-life generation than that which is departing. So if you take the upcoming generation and compare it to the generation who is dying now, one is far more pro-life than the other. And so we're starting to see this shift in the culture. So that's how the Church works. All right. That's the first term that Paul is encouraging us with, or instructing us with. We have impurity, which is obviously the opposite of purity. Now, you might think, "Oh, is this sexual purity?" Because we just talked about sexual immorality. I don't necessarily think so, but to a degree maybe. Because sexual immorality is going to fall under this next category. When we're talking about pure and impure, we're kind of talking about almost sacrificial language, or holiness language. So, there is what is holy, and what is common, and there is clean and unclean. And so, to be holy is to not be common, okay? So, a great example of holy versus common. At the Church in Hugaton, Kansas, where I was a vacancy pastor for six months, there was an altar up in the front. It's where the communion vessels sat, it's the candles, it's where I did the service from. It was on holy ground. It was a holy thing dedicated to the service of the Lord. And on the last day of the Church being opened, we, in a sense, took away that designation. We said, "All of these things are now retired from their service, they're gonna stop being holy and be returned to being common." All of it. We have de-sanctified the sanctuary and all the items in it. Which was good, it had to be done. Because what happened next is that the Church that bought the congregation, or bought the building and all the items in it, they took the altar that was in the front, rolled it into the back, into the narthex where people gather after the service, and made it into a coffee table. They put their pot of coffee, and their napkins, and their styrofoam cups, and the little sugar packets, and the donuts for Sunday morning on the altar of God. But it wasn't the altar of God anymore. It was just a common table. It wasn't holy, it was common. It was just this thing. In the same way, there was an altar in my office at Lakin, Kansas, that used to be the altar at Good Shepherd in Syracuse, Kansas. Good Shepherd Lutheran Church was an offshoot of Emmanuel in Lakin at Syracuse, which is 30 miles to the west, in the eighties. Went for a couple of years, didn't gain any traction in that town. It was a Methodist town, it was hard to gain traction anywhere in the southwest Kansas against the Methodists and the Wesleyans, but you know, you do what you can. And it fell apart. And so, everything that they bought for Good Shepherd came back to Emmanuel, and because Emmanuel had space, they brought it all and put it in their Sunday school rooms, because they didn't have Sunday school anymore, and this altar ended up in my office. And what did I put on it? I put books and papers on it. I didn't treat it like an altar, because I don't need an altar in my office. I have an altar in the sanctuary. I needed a table, though, and so I used it for a table. How could I do that without feeling bad? Well, it's because it went from holy to common. Now, what does that have to do with impurity? Well, in today's sermon, or the sermon that went along with the same recording day, because today's May whatever, 9th. We are to be a holy nation, a royal priesthood. There's supposed to be a purity to our lives, a holiness. So purity and holiness go together, as does impurity and commonness. So we are to be separate, or set apart, from the common, from the rest. We, our lives, are to be distinct from those who don't follow Christ. Which, as we talked about, the world doesn't follow Scripture. You've been following Scripture. There's sort of an ethical standard in Scripture, and if you follow it, you'll set yourself apart from the common man. Common man is kind of bad. You want to be holy, you want to be pure. And so when you, instead of being pure, and when you reject your calling to be holy and set apart, you become impure. You're rejecting the work of the Holy Spirit to gather you away from the world and into the sheepfold of Christ, and instead, go with the common. So to be impure is to choose that which is not set apart, that which is not, for us as Christians, as good. And we ought not to do that. Covetousness is desiring what is others, and then Paul goes on to call it idolatry, which is idol worship. Now, why would it be idolatry? Well, it's idolatry because what you're coveting, what you're lusting after, what you're trying to get by any means possible, becomes your God. It becomes your idol. It becomes the thing that you pursue and love against all things, against all else. And so it takes the place of God the Father in your heart. You fear, love, and trust in something else for your happiness, your prosperity, your blessedness. So whenever we are coveting what is not ours, we become idolaters. All right, so that's the first part of the first question. The three sins, what are they? What damage do they do? They cause all sorts of damage. Things like divorce, immoral behavior, destruction of the family, damnation. You know, like I said, all sorts of things. Then, Paul goes on and he says, "Let there be no filthiness, nor foolish talk, nor crude joking, which are out of place, but instead, let there be thanksgiving." Okay. I'm going to call this verse "bad language." Bad language. So there is good language and there is bad language, and I suppose you could say there's common language. No one is going to say that the word participle is bad or good. It's just a word. But there are good words and bad words. There are appropriate words and inappropriate words. There are filthy words and crude words. And we know that to be true. We know that there are things, well, all you have to do is ask yourself, "Could I say everything I wanted to say from the pulpit? Could I drop the F-bomb from the pulpit?" No. No, I couldn't. There's not a single reason why that would be appropriate in any way, shape, or form. Now, let's choose a different one. Can I use the word "damn" in the pulpit? Yes. Yes, I can. Why? Because "damn" has a religious context. Damning means someone who is going to hell. Now, it's impolite to say in public. It's impolite to throw that judgment at someone in personal relationships, but I, as pastor, somewhat have license to use it. I don't have license to drop the F-bomb whenever I feel like it. It's a bad word. It's an inappropriate word. It's a crude word. There are crude words. There are impolite words. There are unkind words. Porcupine language, I think, was one of the posters I saw. They didn't use that phrase when I was a kid, but I remember seeing it in a Sunday school room in Kansas. No porcupine talk. Sharp words, I suppose, that hurt. And so the contrast here is with thanksgiving, praise, speaking well, speaking kindly, giving thanks and praise to our Lord. That does not mean that every word you speak has to be praised to our Lord. Not everything you say has to be a hymn from the sanctuary. It simply means that this is the ideal. That the language we use would be pleasing to God, not crude and filthy. And of course, so we know Jesus talks about language and what comes out of the mouth. When he talks about what is clean and unclean, he talks about what, it's not what goes into the body that makes a person unclean, but what comes out of the body. In other words, their language, how they speak, what they say to one another. "It is the means in which we communicate and know one another, and if what we show is bad, filthy, crude, then who are we? But bad, filthy, crude, impure, common, and unclean." The opposite of what we've been called to be as God's people. Second question. I have no idea how far in we are, but I'm guessing it's a good twenty minutes. "What strong statement does five make, and do we believe it? What might cause us not to?" Verse five. "For you may be sure of this, that everyone who is sexually immoral or impure, or who is covetous, that is, an idolater, has no inheritance in the kingdom of Christ and God." Yeah, that's a strong statement, isn't it? Because we spent a good amount of time talking about sexually immoral behavior and the rule that I had. So we define sexual immorality, or sexual morality, as we had consensual adults who are married and opposite sex. That was the rule for sexually, sexual behavior, sexually moral things. That's the box. How many people are living outside that box? I don't know. A lot, right? Especially in our culture that flaunts its immoral sexual behavior. We know and recognize this sin everywhere. Yet Paul tells us, and let's, let's take a moment here and be more clear. Paul tells us through the inspiration of Holy, of the Holy Spirit, which mean, God says to us directly that those who participate in sexually immoral behavior have no part in His kingdom. What that means is there's a lot of people who are damned. See, I got to use the word. And that bothers us. And it bothers us for two different reasons, and one of them is good and one of them is bad. It bothers us, A, because we know these people. We know people in our community, in our lives, in our culture, who, if this verse is true, are going to hell. We also don't like this verse because we want to place the blame on God, for they're going there. If God was just more loving, He wouldn't have to damn so many people. Yeah. I suppose that's true. If God would just let us destroy ourselves more, He'd be more loving. That's the logic of that past argument. We, even as Christians, living in this culture, have a tendency to disagree about the seriousness of sexual sin because it is so common. But if we look at what happens with sexual immorality, it destroys everything that God put in place that was good. It destroys the distinction between male and female. It destroys the foundation of a family which God created in the garden. It destroys the church, and it destroys the community because it's built on the fabric of the family. This is how Luther sees the world and how Lutherans see the world. That it's not about the individual, but about the individual, the family, the community, the church. These things all tie together. And sexual immorality destroys the first level and every level that comes after it. Everything that God wants our society to be, our culture, our world, is destroyed and malformed by sexual immorality. There's no sexual immorality in heaven. Obviously. Don't, isn't that obvious? That if God makes us male and female, joins us together this way, that in heaven, that's how it will be. If you don't think the way you live now is going to be the way in which you live in heaven, where's the problem? Is it with you, or is it with God? If the way you think now isn't the way that it's going to be in heaven, is the problem with you or with God? God is restoring things to the way they were before we broke it. So anything broken will not have a place in heaven. Therefore, those who disagree, those who reject the Word of God, and claim, "No, that's not how it's actually going to be. This isn't actually what God wants," they can't have a place in the kingdom of God. Because the kingdom of God has no place for them. It has no place for sin, and has no place for the brokenness of mankind. God's going to fix all that. And that's beyond just homosexuality. It's adultery. It's sleeping around. It's sex without marriage. It's rape. It's all those things. Yeah, gay marriage is the topic because it's the closest thing at hand, and it's the thing we're all sort of wrestling with, and we don't know what to do with these gay friends. You love them, and you work towards the truth as best you can, if they're Christian. See, this is, this is one of the things that, I don't know, I disagree with some different people, and they disagree with me, and that's fine. And the question is, well, where do you start when you're talking about evangelism? Because, you know, you obviously want people to be Christian. And so do you start with gay marriage? When I first had this conversation, the topic wasn't gay marriage, because it hadn't happened yet. This was, you know, over a decade ago. And the question was creation-evolution. Do you have to start with creation-evolution before you can get to Jesus? So do you have to convince someone that God created the earth before you convince them that Christ died for their sins? And this is an important question, because if you think you have to start with all the issues first before you get to Jesus, you'll never get to Jesus. Because Jesus' death and resurrection for us is the foundation of change and repentance. How can you convince someone to repent of sin if they don't believe anything is sin? So you have to start with Christ and go from there. Because, again, like I said earlier, you can't expect the world to act like a Christian if it's not Christian. In the same way, you can't expect an individual's ideas and thoughts to be shaped by the Word of God if they're not first shaped by Christ. If Christ is not the cornerstone of them growing and building, then they're not gonna grow and be built in the shape of the church, in the shape of a Christian. They're gonna look like the world, and it's gonna be a mess. So what do we do with our gay friends and family members who aren't Christian? Well, you love them as Christ loved them. You convince them that Christ does love them, no matter what their sins might be now, and that He will transform them. Now, there's all sorts of things that come up, and we could, there's time to talk about evangelism to those who are living in sin. But you have to start there first and not expect, I mean, this is the problem with the street preachers who are, you know, shouting with a bullhorn at those who are gay. It's not gonna help. They don't know the love of Christ. They certainly don't know it from you. How, why would they repent? Repentance requires some belief, some faith, some trust in God. So, oh, well. Okay. So, back to the question, what might cause us not to believe this statement, this verse from, from verse five? And yes, I erased all that because I had an alarm go off and lost my train of thought. And there, I had to, you know, start back up again. Empty words. That's what Paul calls them. I'd call them "words without truth." That's what empty words are. They're words that we tell ourselves that don't have any truth in them, but that we like. I mean, why would we think that the sexually immoral will inherit the kingdom of God? No, because people tell us that. People tell us it'll be okay. People tell us that, "Yeah, you can be unrepentant and still go to heaven." No. No, you can't. You have to be repentant of your sins, the ones you know of. You can't purposely reject the Word of God and then claim to know Him and believe in Him and call Him king. He's king and lord. Jesus is lord means more than "Jesus died for me." It's a submission to His word and His work. Our lives are under Him. And anything that tells us otherwise, anything that says, "No, God didn't really say, God didn't really say you were gonna die," are words without truth. There's real stakes in this game. We're not messing around with just, you know, whatever. This is eternal life we're talking about. It has consequences. Our lives, our behavior has real consequences, not just with ourselves and our immediate context, but with our eternal salvation. And we have to recognize that. That's, we can't just live as we please. We're called to be different. We're called to be holy. We're called to be priests. We're called to be obedient children to a word that causes us to be different. And if you want to just be the world, if you just want to be the same as everyone else, then follow the empty words. But you know there's no truth in them. Next question is, what metaphor runs throughout this section? It's light and dark. Paul talks about the darkness we once lived and the light that we now live in. And light and dark is truth and false. It's empty words and truth. It's Christ and the world. It's our old life and our new life. We have been born again in the light through Jesus Christ and through the Abiding Word, and we were in darkness, dead in sin. So that's the metaphor, and it's utilized to show us that the two can't coexist. You can't be dead and alive. You can't be light and darkness. There's only one. You're either of the light, or you're of the darkness. You're either of Christ, or you're of the devil. You either have eternal life, or you have eternal damnation. You either have eternal life, or you have eternal damnation. There's no gray middle ground where people will get swept up with the love of God. If there was, we wouldn't have to evangelize. If that whole middle ground of good people that aren't murderers, rapists, and child molesters can be saved just by, you know, not being murderers and rapists and child molesters, then yeah, everybody's going to heaven. We don't need to evangelize. No reason, no purpose. Everybody's getting in, except the really bad people. You know, Hitler's not getting in. Stalin's not getting in. But everybody else is fine. You know, Judas doesn't get in. Judas, Hitler, Stalin, Mao. Whoever else from history is, you know, terrible. Genghis Khan. Those guys aren't getting in, but everybody else is, is fine. They were good people. And there's no evangelism. There's no reason to speak to people, no reason to proclaim Christ. He's just going to cover it. So, I have a question on the page. How are we to make best use of our time? Verse 11 says, "Take no part in the unfruitful works of darkness, but instead expose them. For it is shameful even to speak of the things that are what they do in secret. But when anything is exposed by the light, it becomes visible; for anything that becomes visible is light." And it says, "Awake, O sleeper, and arise from the dead, and Christ will shine on you. Look carefully then how you walk, not as, not as unwise, but as wise, making the best use of the time, because the days are evil. Therefore, do not be foolish, but understand the will of the Lord, what the will of the Lord is." So, one of the questions is, what are we to gain from the quote, "Awake, O sleeper, and arise from the dead, and Christ will shine on you"? Awake, O sleeper, is you. Christ has called us to be awake, to be living in the light, to be people who live in the light, who live awake, who know the light has come and are not sleeping in the dark anymore. And how do we make use of our time? We recognize the day is coming, and the current days are evil. If the current days are evil and God is coming, then we have work to do. We have work to do. We have work of the evangelist to do. We have work of the teacher. We have work of the parent. We have all this work to do and a need to do it. I mean, this, this is classic law causing an impetus for mission. You go from, if you, Paul puts up a standard. Here's the bar. You have to get over the bar. I don't know if he's going to be pole vaulting or high jumping, but let's say he's high jumping. I was terrible at high jump. My problem, and this, I think it's because I was a long jumper in middle school, and when I tried to do high jump in high school, I went more this way than this way. So I'd run and I'd jump and I'd go, "Woo!", and I'd go off the mat. I would miss the mat next to the bar because I was going horizontally and not vertically. So I didn't last very long as a high jumper. I did pole vault for a while, and that was fun. So let's say the bar here is kind of high, and all, this guy can make it, but there's a lot of people that aren't. You know, Christian can walk under the bar, but he can't get over the bar, that sort of... I'm just kidding, Christian. See, I have to include a joke about Christian in every video so that when I see him on Friday and ask him if he liked my joke, I know whether or not he watched the video. So, there's lots of people who don't make the bar. But there are people who are getting over the bar, can help these people. If this person can come over and help these people learn to get over the bar, that's great. Now, how do you get over the bar? Well, the answer is Christ. This isn't actually anybody getting over the bar. Christ is jumping over the bar for you, which, I mean, this metaphor's starting to break down when we're talking about track. So, Paul's setting a standard. No one can meet the standard. Everybody's running short. Therefore, Christ is needed. And then people are above the standard because Christ is righteous. So, what are we supposed to do during these days when we know that we've crossed the bar because of Christ, but there's lots of people who haven't? We go out and tell people. We don't waste our time sitting around doing dark deeds. We go out and we be light to the world. We serve God and we serve our neighbor in our vocations. And by so doing, we're going to actually have opportunities to speak the gospel and to proclaim to them that Christ will help them get over the bar and that there's repentance and forgiveness available to them, and that eternal life can be had. So that's the best use of our time. Last question on the page. For what are our mouths not made for, and what are they made for? We talked about language already in verses three and four. In the end of this section, talks about the difference between wine and drunk and debauchery, and being filled with the Spirit, Psalms, hymns, and spiritual songs, singing and making melody to the Lord with your heart. If the days are dark ahead, if the days are challenging, if the days are evil, you can't spend it being drunk. The work's too hard. It needs to be something more than what you can do when you're drunk, when it's full of debauchery and evil. And so instead, we're, our mouths are filled with Psalms, hymns, spiritual songs, the proclamation of the grace of God and the mercy He has upon sinners. That's what our lives are for, our mouths are for. It's to speak to Christ to each other. All right, so that's Ephesians 5:3 through 21. Next time, we're going to talk about wives submitting to husbands and husbands loving wives. And I'm going to do my best... Oh, we also talk about children and parents, so we'll include that section as well. "Children obey your parents in the Lord, for this is right." For all those who are watching with their kids, that's a verse for them to memorize for next week. All right, until then, I will see you around, and we look forward to getting together on May 31st. Have a great day.